...city council meeting for this Tuesday, May 14th, and D., please call roll.
Mayor Johnson.
President.
Councilmember Chapman.
Present.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Sorenson. Councilmember Reller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Al Sorenson notified us that he could not be here tonight. Do I hear a motion to excuse?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, it comes the announcements tonight. We want everybody to know that the Arab World Talk in a question and answer with Fulbright scholar from Morocco, Dr. Mohamed Boujwa, will be Friday, May 24th, at Neo Public Library, from 4:30 to 5:30. It's cosponsored by Neo Public Library and the Community Colleges of Spokane. He's here as a guest. I've met him one time on his trustees meeting up in Spokane. Very, very knowledgeable individual, and so he'll be here as the speaker. Other announcements tonight. Don't miss Pullman's downtown art fest, starting this Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Saturday, from 10:30 to 8:00 p.m. Art Fest is an innovative and interactive festival for all ages, celebrating arts, commerce, and the community. Pullman's Fresh Farmers Market reopens the season tomorrow, from 3:30 to 6:30, every week, at the Brawlsford WSU Visitor Center, corner of Main and Spring Streets. A great location. A couple of proclamations tonight. This is Police Week, so whereas Pullman Police Department personnel play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all the residents in Pullman, and whereas it's important that all residents know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of the Police Department, and that members of our Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation, whereas I, Glenn Johnson, the mayor of City of Pullman, declare this as Police Week. We also have another proclamation, that the month of May is Mental Health Month, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and prevention is an effective way to reduce the burdens of mental health conditions, whereas there's strong research that animal companionship, humor, spirituality, religion, recreation, social connections, work-life balance can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our community and the nation, whereas with effective treatment, those individuals' mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full and productive lives. I declare this as Mental Health Month. And Nathan, you have some comments you want to make on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing this important topic forward. Some of you may know, we have suffered several losses in our Pullman family from mental health and suicide. I've seen friends from Pullman High School and colleagues throughout the years take their own wives or attempt suicide. Some of us suffer or know someone who has suffered from mental health challenges. There is nothing wrong with this, but many struggle through the thick mud of depression and treadmill of anxiety, fearing to be looked at different. It's important for everyone to know that this challenge doesn't need to be faced alone. These days, it is more accepted to discuss mental health, and while it can still be scary and feel isolating, there are services available. If you want to talk to someone, here are a couple lines. Two local crisis numbers through Palouse River Counseling, 1-866-871-6385, and 334-1133. The National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is 1-800-273-8255, and Cougar Health Services Crisis Line is 335-4511 during business hours, and 335-2159 during evenings and weekends. Look, I know how tough it is. Sometimes your mind keeps you awake, reviewing every little thing you said or did. When you finally fall asleep, you don't want to get out of bed because it's a challenge. What's the point? At the same time, it feels like you are battling your own thoughts and feel stuck in limbo. We all suffer from challenges that no one else knows anything about, so it's important for all of us to be a little bit more kind, listen, be patient, and understanding. It just may save someone's life. So if you are struggling, remember this. Sometimes just standing still can be a step forward, and if you take a few steps back, it's not failure, it's called the cha-cha. I think Ann told me about that one. My point is to remember, many of us are facing similar but different challenges. You are not alone, so reach out, don't give up, and keep moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What are the consent agenda then? We'll be moving some things around as far as the agenda is concerned. So first of all, we have the consent agenda before you. These are items that are considered routine in nature. Do I hear a motion to read by title or by?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that... Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the special meeting of May 6, 2019, and approve them as submitted; a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7, 2019, and approve them as submitted; a motion to approve payment of the dispersment items presented, accounts payable checks numbered 95758 through 95811, totaling $1,191,752.72; and a motion to approve payment for the dispersment items presented, accounts payable checks numbered 528 through 532, and 95812 through 95834, totaling $1,036,168.95; payroll checks numbered 74525 through 74634, totaling $90,428.49; and electronic transfers 55002 through 55261, totaling $888,963.25.
Is there any item the council would like to offer discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items number two through five. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we start our regular agenda tonight, we have a number of people in our audience tonight, and a lot of children, and so I don't want you to have to sit through the entire meeting tonight. I want to make sure we can hear from you tonight, right now, and I know we're talking about Harvest Drive. So whoever wants to start the conversation, again, we try and keep things limited to like three minutes of length. I think some of the children who may testify might be just a bit shorter than that. So why don't we just start here? And we want you to identify yourself, and let us know who you are, and where you live, and we appreciate you coming here tonight.
Dear City Council, I am eight. I live on Harvest Drive. Please, cars driving too fast, please put in a crosswalk. Thank you, Hater.
Thank you. Okay. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Pierce. I'm going to read on behalf of my son, Tarver. Says, "Dear Pullman City Council members, please help make Harvest Drive safer for me and my neighbors. I think a crosswalk would help drivers see kids like me better. Thank you, Tarver R. Pierce."
You are hiding behind the podium, so thank you.
My name is Jamie Evelyn. I am 90 years old, and I live on Harvest Drive. On my street, people are driving too fast, and I can't, um, and I can't play outside in the front yard or ride my bike. I think that we could put a crosswalk or speed bump in.
I'm Sophie Collins, and I am 10 years old, and I don't feel safe on this road, because most of the cars, you can obvious, obviously see, they are going over the speed limit. I think we can solve this problem by making a speed bump, and even the people that don't have kids on our roads still think the cars should just slow down, or we could like put a stop sign or something. And if you did it to our street, we would be really happy. So can you please do this for my friends and me, so we don't get hurt, and so we can play outside?
Great, thank you. You can lower it down a little bit there.
Dear City Council, please remember to drive slowly on Harvest. Some people drive too fast. We could put a speed bump. I think we should drive slowly, because if someone was walking across the road, and a car passed by too fa-
Too fast.
And a car passed by, and it was going too fast, and it almost ran over the person. P.S. My name is Lucy, and I am seven.
Thank you.
This is the picture that Violet Collins drew.
Nice picture. Were you the ones who on Facebook were telling cars to slow down?
Yeah.
Yes, very effective. Is there anyone else who wants to say something here tonight from on the Harvest Drive? If you're in the back row, you're getting ready to, please come up. We'd like to have all the people on the Harvest Road just do it right now as we can.
So my name is Justin Evelyn, and my son is Jagger Evelyn. And he's drawn a picture for us.
Okay.
My name is Jagger. I am six years old. I live on Harvest Drive.
I think he's going to be a sportscaster, Brandon. That's your job right there. You can raise the microphone up, too. There you go.
Dear City Council, my name is Chloe, and I'm 12 years old, and I live on Harvest Drive. I don't normally walk to school, because my parents are scared for me to walk, even though I live super close to the middle school. I love riding my bike, but I can't, because the street is too busy. I think we should put a crosswalk or make the speed go down. Then me and my friends can walk to school and ride our bikes, and we can do all the things that we want to do, but be safe.
Okay, thank you.
Dear City Council, my name is Annalise, and I am eight years old. I live on Harvest Drive. I like to ride my bike, but the streets are so busy that I cannot ride my bike. Can we have a speed bump?
Can I see your letter? Can you say, "I'm Desmond"?
I'm Desmond.
So Desmond, Desmond drew a picture, and he said, "You can put a stop sign where the cars are going really fast."
I'm Elizabeth Loughlin. I, I am the newest member of Harvest Drive and this wonderful community, and so I have already seen very many too close of calls with our children, and with our pets, and people backing out, and even just adults crossing. And so it was, the final straw was pulling a child's arm back out of the road that I said, "We just thought, call somebody." And, and so, Eileen, I wrote you first, and you guys have been so incredibly gracious in listening to us, and we just want to say thank you for allowing us to come today and have our kiddos read their letters. We very much appreciate it. We're very proud to be in Pullman for things like this. Thank you.
We're very proud to have you here, too, and I know we have the speed trailer out there right now. Have you noticed any kind of help with that? Has it slowed down a little bit? We're going to have, I was talking to Clayton here, and we're going to have some flags on the other side, coming from Walmart, heading towards Lincoln Middle School, where it says residential area. Most people just don't even look at it anymore, so we're going to put some flags on that to call attention to it, too. And we're going to start looking at the other things that you've suggested, too. Is that...
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who didn't get a chance to say something tonight?
No.
Okay. So this way, we made your bedtime, too, okay? And this way, you can get home and get to read favorite book before you, you know, go to bed, okay? So all, on behalf of the whole council, thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you for bringing us to our attention. We've read your emails, believe me, and we're working on it, okay?
Thank you.
So thank you. Did you want to say something, Brandon?
Absolutely. No. I, I very much appreciate you guys coming to, to council. I, honest to goodness, I got a little bit emotional, because it's personal for me. I've got four kids, and the speed is an issue, and so by the time you guys all trotted out toward the end, I was, it hit me right in the fields, as the, as the youngsters say. I have really enjoyed some of the discussions that we've had lately. Mark Fenton coming in, and maybe not tonight, but I would like to have further discussions with staff, whether it's a, one of our, just a discussion evening, to talk about the, the speed on, on Harvest Drive. Maybe not exclusively Harvest, but I would like to talk about that. I know there are some avenues that have been presented by the state to, to have neighborhood-safe streets. I would like to talk about complete streets. I know Clayton has attended a conference on complete streets, and I know all of these residents without, not without merit, have, have been very measured and very reasonable, and have looked at things such as the curb extensions, which Clayton knows all of this, and so I appreciate him working with us. I'd like to be able to keep the conversation going.
Sure. So, Eileen?
Yes, and it's, it, this is a, this is about, this is about the quality of our neighborhoods and the enrichment of our neighborhoods for everyone who uses the neighborhoods. The Board of Directors of the Pullman Senior Citizens Association voted to endorse developing a process by which speed limits could be reduced in select areas of the city. So that's going to be one of the, one of the tools in our toolbox, along with other things that were mentioned, the humps and the bumps and the slumps, and then that sort of thing as well. So, but we, for, one of the first steps would be to, to encourage the, the process, building a process by which speed limits can be reduced, because that is required by the state. And that does not include a traffic study or an engineering study, fortunately. There are other, there are other ways to, to approach that. So that's a, so that way we can make something happen without spending a whole lot of taxpayer money and getting, getting some quality results on that. So it's, it's about our neighborhoods. It's about the enrichment of our quality of life.
Anyone else would like to make comments? Okay. All right. Thanks again. We now go to our regular agenda, and the first item up for discussion tonight is a resolution authorizing the State Department of Transportation to apply for a low or no emissions grant program capital grant assistance. So Wayne Thompson, our transit manager is here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The resolution before you is a grant application, but I'd like to walk through it fairly briefly, but in chronological order, what the context is for this application. Last summer, we applied for state funding through a regional mobility grant program to complete an electrical infrastructure upgrade and charging station installation at the transit facility. In short, that means we're trying to get ready for fully electric buses. In the fall of last year, we also submitted an application for assistance, 80% assistance, with two fully electric buses. And in that application, we referenced the first. If we did not receive the state funding for the charging stations, we would take care of that roughly $300,000 cost locally. Fast forward to the spring, we have learned that we did not receive the state regional mobility grant for the infrastructure. We did receive the grant for the two fully electric buses. So rather than assume that financial burden 100% locally immediately, I did bring another grant opportunity to council at the April 9th meeting as part of an electrical upgrade, update, and received encouragement to apply. So that's the grant application before you, and it's an 80% match for, for a $263,000 project. And the way this particular program works, it's directly through the federal government, the FTA. We receive our, our funds through the State Department of Transportation, so this resolution authorizes the application through DOT on our behalf. The local funding would be about $52,000, if successful, out of a $263,000 project. And we're already working with a local architectural firm, Design West, on the design for the project, which would include a new transformer, replacing the one that's already on a concrete pad just outside the transit gate. There's an empty conduit underground, so no, no excavations required. That empty conduit would be used to bring in the, the extra cable. A panel in the transit shop would be installed, and then the electrical charging station. And we've narrowed it down to one company for that charging station. It's called ChargePoint, and it is actually used by more than one of the bus manufacturers, so regardless of which bus we choose, we're covered with, with the plans to, to upgrade to this ChargePoint system. And if successful, we would be able to not only charge the first two buses, but up to eight buses, so we're looking a ways down the road with the current price tag. And the plan would be to start the work in the fall, this coming fall, and then we'd be a year to two years out on the arrival of our first two electric buses. So my request to you tonight is to adopt the resolution allowing the grant application by the State Department of Transportation on our behalf.
Questions? Well, I would hope you'd also talk to Paul Kimmel with Avista, because obviously Avista's pioneered with us and proctmed, partnered with us as far as the Relight Washington is concerned, and we got money from Transportation Improvement Board, and also with the work that they've, they've done at the Brawlsford Visitor Center. So maybe there might be some other ways we could...
I have. Paul's actually written a letter of support for this particular grant.
Excellent.
Very helpful.
Excellent. No other questions? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt Resolution Number R-30-19.
Second.
Resolution Number R-30-19, a resolution authorizing Washington State Department of Transportation to apply for low or no emission grant program capital grant assistance on behalf of Pullman Transit, to fund the majority of an electrical upgrade to the city's main transit facility to result in an all-electric bus charging system.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item number two tonight, and we'll start the Tony Bean Show tonight. Our executive director, the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport. Several grant applications are in here. We have to get council prior approval on these, but I asked Tony if he'd also give us an update on the airport, and so he brought some slides to show some great progress that's being made. So Tony Bean?
We'll try to tie all of this together, because it all does tie together. The state grant funding supports the federal funding, and then air service part of it is all intertwined into terminals and air service and all of the efforts that have gone with the runway. But we'll start with just a, a brief kind of update of what's happening with the project and, and where we're at. And this is the exciting part, but it's crunch time, so there's a lot of, a lot of activity happening, a lot of things going on right now. This is the last federal grant requested for the runway program, so we are 11 grants in, we're finally done. This is just for fun, because it's me. And if you can't read it, it says US Marine Logic, and at the bottom it says, "If you don't understand this, you've never met Marines." And it's a mouse and cheese.
Marine is the executive director.
But it is kind of how we do things with the airport, and we try to find linear solutions. They might be really small ones, and we do a lot of this, but we try to find linear ones. Terminal connectivity, wanted to give an update on this, because it's come up, not only in the city of Pullman, it's come up in the city of Moscow, and people have asked about it, what are you doing about issues with the terminal? Utility access was never down the road. It is now, and we talked with the airport board about, can we approach with the project, because we were already moving fiber out of where the existing runway is. Now, the fiber was located where the new runway is going. So talking with Frontier, and talking with the port, and talking with Avista, and all the utility companies, can we get you in the franchise, which is where they want to be anyway? And they agreed to do that. The port didn't have fiber at the time, and approached the, the airport about, well, can we, well, you're going to, already dig the trans, can we put fiber in? And then the airport board supported that. So there's services into the corridor now, so we can increase the capability to get fiber into the airport. It's never been there before. We've already increased public Wi-Fi speeds to 10 to 15 megabytes per second. It's a significant improvement over, I think I speed tested it the first time, where I think it was one and a half. So 10 to 15 is a lot better. 10 times is pretty good. We worked with the Vista. There's charging stations for cell phones, both on the public side and in the sterile area, so that's actually been utilized quite a bit. And then we're bringing port fiber across the airport road with First Step to make the services available to where we can bump 10 to 15 megabytes per second up to whatever standard that we need into the future for the, for the terminal. Then the other one is AT&amp;T. If you have an AT&amp;T phone and you've been out to the airport, it is the biggest dead zone that ever existed for AT&amp;T. It doesn't work. And we've been working with University of Idaho and Dan Ubert, who's their vice president of technology and IT services, and working with AT&amp;T, is if we have the Wi-Fi capability, they can put a box in at no cost to the airport that would help with that for their customers. So a lot of things are getting done with the terminal connectivity. I just wanted to report back, because there has been questions about what is happening with that. We'll start with that. We're funded to runway open with the grant that we are requesting. We are funded to completion of the project. So right now, the last grant that we had funds us to the runway. The existing grant that we're asking for is what's in green. Can we build a taxiway, connect everything up, and then finish up connecting Airport Creek and all of the drainage systems and the miles of, of all of the stormwater systems and everything that are, with a flood plane, and just tying everything back into the existing airport. So that finishes the, the construction progress and all of the pieces that have been loose ends for different things for different reasons. So some of the stormwater issues, we can't do till the end, and some of the creek you can't fix until the very end. And so this last grant finishes that, and we are to be opening improvements for the 2020 bids open May 23rd, and then we're doing structure demolition. We've got a project out to demolish the structures that we're not going to use with the property that was acquired with Washington State University. If we do not do it now, it will be a local cost in the future. The FAA will not be able to participate. So we're getting that participation with the FAA. And the last one is fencing. If you've noticed with the airport, the south side of the airport is not fenced. There is no, there's no physical barrier to it, and we're going to put a physical barrier on there to meet TSA standards, rather than doing it through time and distance, which is what it is now, because you can see a long ways, and you can watch somebody walk, if they're walking or driving or whatever. But to actually put a physical barrier there. Instrument landing system is being constructed right now. It has been delivered, and so the FAA is starting work. They already have a contractor. It is, the majority of the work will be done by Kovaco, which is an electrical sub, but they're doing the majority of the work, and then there's a portion of local work that's in there. I think Motley, Motley has a portion of it. So there's, there's local contractors that are just getting different pieces of, of a lot of the work, but that ILS system's going in, and it'll be, the first flight check will happen in July. And so we'll have successive flight checks to make sure everything's on track, but it is being, it's procured, it's delivered, and it's starting to be constructed. The partnerships, I can't say enough about how important it is, the partnerships that, and the leadership from both of the cities, and both councils, and, and both mayors. This project wouldn't happen without it. And Glenn and I were at a FAA Northwest Mountain Region Conference, where it is the Northwest States, and the FAA asks for presentations and different things that airports are doing, and instead of telling them about brick and mortar stuff, you know, this is how we built the drainage system, and this is what we did with runway, we talked about how we actually work in the Palouse, which is, it's a novelty. It is very different than any other community, and it was extremely well-received. People got a lot of value out of it, and it's something that works very well for us, and there's a lot of communities that aspire to do that. They just have different obstacles that get in their way to, to make that more difficult, and this region's really worked well with eliminating those obstacles or mitigating them in other, in other means. Work in progress, and this isn't as, maybe as light as you'd like it, but this was a picture when we were closed with the runway, and you can see they'd started working on the runway. This is last fall. This is the first test strip. Test strips with the FAA are extremely stringent. They're about, I don't know, eight different categories of things they have to pass. If any one of them fails by a little bit, you have to take it up. You can't- You can't, you can't leave it. It's not like a road or anything else that we do. If it fails, one, any one piece of it fails, it fails, and you cannot pave until you can prove that you can meet all the FAA's requirements through that test strip. So we've, we've had some struggles with making sure that test strips work out, but they're working out. This was the first two poles, 7100 feet, and they did them 25, 25 feet wide. And I don't even know if you can see this. But this is the entire runway. Right now, the entire runway is done in three inches, and maybe this one is a better, better picture. This is taken from a hill on the east end looking west, and you can see the ski jump in the runway. The existing runway has a ski jump in it right now. It's just, this one looks like it's more pronounced because of where the, the picture's being taken, but this is pavement all the way across. That's 150 foot wide. Next thing's coming for the airport, we are talking about the closure, and we'll go through some of the things that are happening from September 8th to October 3rd. Then October 3rd, we're going to have, basically it'll be a soft open. We'll open for general aviation and business aviation. It gives a week if we have any kind of a delay in the contracting process with the contractor and construction, and then they've got a week before the airline comes back in. So it gives us some, some flexibility to make sure that when Alaska Service comes back on October 11th, we, we start. The runway open, the ribbon cutting ceremony, the mayor set that as 10:10 at 10:00 a.m. So it'll be October 10th at 10, 10 o'clock in the morning. 2020 Taxiway A Package, that is the package that's, that's out, that'll be opened on the 23rd, and so there's a lot of engineers with an estimate right now crossing their fingers. And I don't know what that'll be until we get done, but I think if everything else holds true, Meaden Hunt never wins a bid, so it turns out really well. Terminal Development Program, we're still moving forward with that, with the 22 million. There's 5 million additional that the FAA could participate in discretionary funds, so we're working on, on those. And then the air service development application, it is also in the request from the airport to have the city act as the, the administrative sponsor in the, in the same manner that the city of Pullman acts as the administrative sponsor for everything else that has to do with the airport. Closure actions, Alaska Airlines, we approached them, you know, what are you going to do to help work us through the closure and be able to keep customers? You know, it's going to be an inconvenience, what can we do to work on that? Alaska's doing a two mile, or a double mile promotion for everybody in this zip code that would use this, this airport predominantly. But if you go to Spokane, you fly Alaska, it'll be double miles from Spokane to Seattle, and I think the mayor's already signed up. Coordination with Spokane Airport...
I got the email, and I responded to it.
Yes. Working with, with Spokane International Airport about trying to get additional flights. So Alaska put in two frequencies, so there'll be two more flights that go into Spokane during this period to try to make sure that we're handling passengers and, and folks that are going to be displaced through that five-week period. We're working with transit partners. We met with Wheatland Express today. Is there an opportunity there? Can we get it scheduled to where we can make it easy or easier for people to be able to get to and from during the closure? And then there's been a lot of tenant coordination. So Switzer Engineering will be operating out of Lewiston during the closure, and then we'll let them know when, when we open back up. And the same thing with Interstate Aviation, they'll be operating in different places. But there's a huge communication effort with social media, with the regular media, and just trying to get information out there as much as we can, as fast as we can. We can't ever reach everybody, we try awfully hard. But having Alaska put it out, and having Spokane International put it out on their list, plus everything that we're doing on our side to put everything on a list and get it out there is important. People really like this graphic, because it actually shows what you're going to see in, if everything goes the way that we're, we're moving within the next five years. This is the existing runway down here. This is the new one, and, and this is what it looked like before we ever put a shovel in the ground. And so we'll have a terminal area, goes all the way over here with aircraft parking, vehicle parking, but it's a graphic that kind of just really helps show what the vision was and what it's actually going to look like when we're finished. Capital improvements. We are going to be bringing another grant application, probably next council meeting, but it'll be for snow removal equipment, and it is entitlement monies that are not being utilized at another airport that they're not utilizing. So if I can get snow removal equipment and things moved from 2023 into 2018 or 2019, we certainly want to do that. And there may be, there's probably some fencing in there for the project if there's not enough capacity in the existing grant. And then we're going to put in an emergency airfield generator into that as well. And then we've got, if you go out there right now when the runway's closed, there's a big set of X, there's a large lit X's, we're going to burn those things up. So we ask the FAA, are they eligible to replace those closure X's? Because we need them. Anytime you close a runway, you have to have them. And those are eligible, so those will be in that next request that we make. But right now, 2020, our primary entitlement, the $1 million for designing a terminal building, that's 2020 federal year, so that's October 1st. So we are getting to the point where we're going to be able to put design funds towards a terminal and figure out what that should be. Okay, so air service development, the Small Community Air Service Development Grant Opportunity, they're, they're an amazing grant, that program is just an amazing program. I applied for one 10 years ago in West Yellowstone, Montana, and I didn't have a consultant, because I didn't have any money, and I was awarded a grant. And the year that I was awarded a grant for marketing promotions for that airport, 66 communities applied for the grant, 16 got a grant. It is very competitive. The best thing we've got going for us, we've never applied, they don't even know we're on the map. And there are other communities that are on their second or third turn at the, at the grant opportunity. What have we done to date? We've done pro forma, the airport board has hired Meaden Hunt's air service development side to work on putting together a route map and doing a lot of the due diligence with the air carriers to make sure that we're meeting with air carriers, we're finding the right partner, going to the right destination, we're building additive air service, we're not splitting the existing pie into different pieces. So the, the goal with the route study and the aircraft fit is Denver, and it's United or SkyWest, because they're the only two airlines that are really expanding, and we don't want to do anything that takes away from the existing service we already have. Anything that hurts Alaska is not going to help our, our region, our community. But the community's engagement, so we need support letters, we need matching dollars. We've sent that out through the business community, because it's typically a business action. It's not, we won't be coming to the cities to ask for Small Community Air Service Development match. We will be asking for a letter supporting it, and of course, your support in acting as the sponsoring city. But the revenue guarantee, what it is, is basically what happens with airlines is, a community approaches the airline, says, please fly, you know, our community and, and do this, and the airline goes, well, what are you going to do to help us assume the risk and hold our hand that you're a partner in this, and you're not just asking for service? And so what they'll ask for is a revenue guarantee from the community. And you see this in a lot of, the resort destinations, the ski cities especially, so Jackson Hall, Sun Valley, you see this a lot. And their chambers drive a whole bunch of money to get revenue guarantee up. And what it is, is it's a bank of money that the airline can pull for, from, from up to three years. If they don't break even, it's profit. You're not underwriting their service, the service costs millions, millions and millions of dollars, but you're underwriting a portion of their profit. And the idea is to get them, that first two, three years, to make sure the service is going to go. The marketing service, you know, our changing customer base, we need to market because our customer base here, we're a unique region where 10,000 new people show up every single year. You think you're saying the same thing, but you're not saying it to the same people. And so that is a, a piece where we can market, and, and the airport revenues that are going into the, into the grant are marketing-only, airport revenues are not authorized to be used for revenue guarantee, we can't do that with airport revenue. We already have one business signed up, and it's MZ out of Moscow, so Economic Modeling Specialties, $25,000. So we're looking at a total match of around 300 to 400,000, and then a, a grant opportunity anywhere from 750 to a million, and it's going to be up to the air carrier when we talk to them, what do you want to see? And that's what we'll put in the grant application. That, questions on how this is all kind of tied together? I know that was really quick.
Questions after this, before we start with the different matters we have to approve? Any questions? Okay, item number two tonight is a resolution pre-authorizing the acceptance of the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Administration report. So is there anything specific on this one here, Tony, you want to talk about? This is supporting the relocation of runway 624.
Yes, this is the, this is that final federal grant. And we've asked for 46 million, we're not going to get 46 million, but it's to make sure that when bids come in and we give it to the FAA, that we have the capacity to make sure that we're, we're addressing exactly what that is. And so it's going to be done off the actual bids that come in in the next two to three weeks, and that's the amount up to that the FAA will authorize. But we make sure that we ask for an additional amount, so that we were capped, I don't have to come back to the council and say, well, we asked for 28, and they said 30, 32 came out to be the number. So we always ask for a safe, higher number on that.
Are there no other questions on this? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt... Move to adopt R-31-19. Second.
Second.
Resolution Number R-31-19, a resolution pre-authorizing the acceptance of U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program Grant Monies for multiple Pullman Moscow Regional Airport projects supporting the relocation of runway 624.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to the next resolution for Tony. This is R-32-19. This is dealing with pre-authorizing acceptance from Washdott.
Right, so we've put in, Washdott, last year was able to increase the amount that you can apply for to, from 250,000 to 750,000. So we've requested that amount, and this is for match. So this, this assists us in the local match for the federal, for the federal grant dollars. I have already put in the application based off of last year's grant funds, because we're still under those grant funds right now, and we don't, we haven't got a new FAA grant yet. And there's plenty of capacity, but we still need the preauthorization to accept those grant funds from the council.
Are there no questions on this? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt R-32-19. Second.
Laura?
Resolution Number R-32-19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, to the Washington State Department of Transportation Aviation Division, pre-authorizing the acceptance of a Washdott aviation grant in the maximum amount of 750,000 as conditioned by the grant.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four, it's a resolution pre-authorizing acceptance of the U.S. Department of Transportation Small Community Air Service Grant. Tony?
So this one is a little different, and there's condition in there about the match that we meet, we're not going to apply if we don't, if we can't come up with $300,000, we're not even going to put the application in, but I don't think that's going to be a problem. And so we won't be applying if we can't meet the requirements of the grant. But that being said, I don't see that there's going to be an issue with any of that, we've already raised 50, and we haven't even started really pushing on, on any of those things. But it's a different kind of a grant where it's asking the city to act in the similar role, but with a USDOT grant and Small Community Air Service Development Program, which is a USDOT. So we're having to go through grants.gov, which is something that we haven't done before and, and some of those pieces. But we do need a, a sponsoring entity to accept the grant funds and to work on the administrative portion to help me do the reports. And again, every time we do something marketing, we have to send it to USDOT, and kind of the way it works is, if it turns out to be 82%, they, whatever you spend, they give you 82% back. If we don't spend the revenue guarantee, that would be a great thing, it means the air carrier's doing really well, and that money would just go back to USDOT. And we have four years to, to spend that grant, so we don't have to go get an air carrier tomorrow. Air carrier could be matched up with a terminal building, and there, there's been, you know, some communities, they'll go two, three, four years before they find an air carrier as a partner, and some of them even get extensions. But we felt it was prudent to apply for it now. If I get to the point where we put in the application, there's only 12 and a half million dollars in the, in the pie right now for that grant opportunity, and it gets denied, I can always apply for it next year. We felt it was prudent to ask for that now, and, and just to make sure that the council knows is we're not going to be applying. If we can't secure the pledge amounts to get to 300,000, that says that that's what we really need to do to be successful, then we won't be applying. But I don't, again, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Any further questions on this one? And do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt R-33-19.
Second.
Laura?
Resolution Number R-33-19, a resolution pre-authorizing the acceptance of U.S. Department of Transportation Small Community Air Service Development Program Grant Monies for efforts to attract additional air service to the region.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just want to say thank you to the council for, we're going to bring the same resolutions to the Moscow City Council and the work session on the 28th. But again, a special thanks for the city council hosting Senator Schessler when we started asking about can we get utilities run to a terminal, and we were able to get money secured in the capital budget, I think it was 1.626 million. And we've done a lot of work with Kate Clayton and Kevin, and what can we do? And, and just very appreciative for all the efforts and all the help.
And tonight, I sent all three of our legislators thank yous for all what they've done for us this past, because what Senator Schessler did for us with, with the money for the infrastructure and also for Highway 26, Joe and Mary did that kind of work in the House, trying to make sure everything got shepherded through, so.
Yeah, it was a complex process.
Definitely was, but we came out all right. Thanks again, Tony. Item number five tonight is a motion to ratify a labor agreement, and Mike Urban is here, and also Karen Sires, our Human Resources Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Before you tonight is the labor agreement with City of Pullman and the Amalgamated Transit Union Local 1015. This is a three-year contract, retroactive to the beginning of 2019, going through 2021. So this process started late last year, and I really want to thank the Local 1015 and staff, Wayne Thompson's staff, and especially Karen Sires, through shepherding this through to this point. Highlights on this document I want to touch on, 3% wage increase, as I mentioned, it's retroactive to January 1st, which is, this is comparable to the other interest arbitration groups that we have in the city. We did some updates to reflect the current state and federal statutes, most notably the sick time. Clarified language with respect to overtime, working outside of the pay class, and new hire probations. And then we cleaned up some language to create concurrency across other citywide bargaining events. And so with that, staff recommends you ratify the contract, and if you have any questions, as Mayor mentioned, Karen Sires is here to help me answer those for you.
Okay. With that, is there any questions? If not, do I hear a motion on this item?
Move to adopt labor contract with Amalgamated Transit Union Local 1015 as presented.
Second.
Motion to ratify labor agreement, 2019, 2021, between the City of Pullman, Amalgamated Transit Union Local 1015. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we come to the point of new business, any new business to come before the council tonight. We took care of most of the people on Harvest Drive really, so at least the kiddos get home on that. Before we adjourn, I want to notify that we will have an executive session tonight pursuant to the authority of RCW 42-3110. City council will meet with our legal staff to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for the sale or lease, to review negotiations on the performances of publicly bid contracts. And that special session will be for 20 minutes, executive session tonight. With that, we will adjourn for executive session, and we will start the executive session in five minutes from right now. Thank you for attending.